And again, welcome to the August 6, 2025 regular school board meeting. I begin with the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise in a second. Sean, does anyone have any changes they'd like to make to the agenda? Okay, all in favor of the agenda as presented? One, two, three, four, five in favor and the student rep in favor. Does anyone available for public comments? Before we take public comments, I would ask you to please speak from the podium and state your name and town of residence. Generally, each speaker will have three minutes within the timeframe, but a speaker will not be recognized for a second time on a single topic. Make sure that you show courtesy and respect for others and please visit the R C S D website. Policy B E D H has more guidelines on the public speaking segment. Seeing no public speaking, I will move to the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 23rd? Sean, thank you. And a second. Denise, does anyone have any corrections? Go for it.
All right. And what I am taking to mean, please write down summaries of your committee reports before trying to say them out loud. Under the Finance Committee report, Heather Smith said they discussed landscaping costs. I don't think that's right. I was searching my brain. What I think is anticipated expenses for the 26, 27 school year. And that's, that's fine. And try to be more courteous next time.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, all in favor of approving the regular meeting minutes of July 23rd as amended? Five in favor and the student rep in favor. And now the non-public meeting minutes of July 23rd. Can I have a motion to approve those? Sean, thank you. And a second. Denise, thank you. Anyone have any changes to those minutes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the non-public meeting minutes as presented? One, two, three, four, five. And okay, student rep in favor. All right, we'll move on to district announcements. No district announcements today. How about board announcements? Does anyone have anything they'd like to announce? Okay. Oh, I apologize. Yes, please.
I was very excited to see the high school parking lot and the S A U facilities building parking lot get repaved. And so just their teachers may not be in the building, but there are lots of busy B-type activities happening all around the district with maintenance and whatnot. I know there's stuff going on at the other schools. That one I just happened to see as I drive past.
And a nice, beautiful, fresh coat of paint on the front doors also. Okay, anyone else? We'll move on to district reports. Dr. Shapps.
Thank you. And just to echo Heather, your comments, it's been a very busy summer and Dave Totti and crew have been out supervising and just working with a lot of partners around improvements. And I think at our second meeting in September, we'll have the opportunity just to update the community and the board on the full scope of work over the summer and progress we've made through the budget in terms of, I would say, capital repairs. And so that's more to come on that. We just want to remind families, registration portal is open. Encourage you to go to the website and complete registration so that you have access to your child's class placement and schedules as well. Kindergarten enrollment, just an update. We're now at 72 students for Mass Way. So that is actually at, I would say, our 18 students per class for the four sections. And we're at 56 at Moheramit, which is, you know, above the 54 at this point, where we have four families that are on the waitlist. So we're about 128 overall. I just want to recognize this summer, IT staff, custodians of maintenance have been working tirelessly to prepare our classrooms and school buildings for the start of school. And I appreciate with the heat and, you know, just the conditions, their efforts to really make sure that the buildings are ready to go later this month when school begins. So thank you to all of our staff. We continue to work as administrative group on professional development, working both on supervision, working with the guild leadership on revisiting the supervision section of the guild contract to revise the entire teacher evaluation process. And so we're thrilled, we met last week, a large group of administrators and teacher leaders and really made great progress on revising that sections. And so we have more to report to the board. Hopefully, we're able to complete that work by the end of this month and actually make that operable in terms of the start of the school year. So really, really happy with our collaboration. At this point, I want to invite Director of Communications Jen Brown to the podium. We would like to share with the board and the community our outline of a communication strategy vis-à-vis the capital projects that we hope to put forth in the spring. And so we want to share our, I would say, outline of a strategy and seek your input in terms of process and priorities and with that.
There you go.
Great. So thank you, Jen. So we start obviously with our purpose. And to boil it down to a kind of a key idea, we really want to reach the entire school district community. That is everyone in our three towns so that the residents of Durham Lee and Madbury really have a clear understanding of what we're trying to accomplish relative to this, the renovation and expansion of the elementary. That's that importance of full transparency around information and costs and what we hope to accomplish, but more so timely communications and really thinking about the various modalities and ways in which we can share information. And we'll have more to say on that. But it's really ensuring that we have informed voters and that is the key to all of this.
Is this on? Oh, yes. Hi, everyone. Genevieve Brown, Director of Communications for the Oyster River Cooperative School District. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you tonight. As Dr. Shapps mentioned, we do have key objectives for this communication strategy regarding the capital planning 2025, 2026 projects. One of them, very important at the core of our strategy, is the timely communication piece. So we do have at heart to keep Oyster River families and residents of Durham Lee and Madbury informed of the progress and impact, not only of warrant number five and the work accomplished so far, but what's yet to come with regards to renovations and construction. We want to raise awareness and make sure everyone understands the construction phase and benefits to students, staff, and the district. We also want to do direct outreach to address questions and concerns proactively. We will focus on transparency to provide accurate information to staff administrators and make sure that everyone has the ability, if they so are willing, to dispel misconceptions. And ultimately, we're doing this work because hopefully we want to encourage informed participation in an upcoming vote this coming March. When building a strategy like this, it's important to think about the audience, as I would describe affinity groups and stakeholders. So the school board, as you'll see, is one of them. But we also have Oyster River staff, families. The building committee has been very invested in this work. We have outstanding partnerships with our PTOs and town officials. So this, these are outlets that we can leverage. We have folks that are very connected and that I would qualify as influencers in the community. So we would be doing direct outreach to them as well as community organizations, local media as required. And I bolder the last point, and it's really last but not least. If, it's been a minute since I looked at the census data, but if my math is not wrong, we have more folks in Durham Lee and Madbury who do not have kids in the district. So we do want to make sure our strategy is comprehensive enough that we are connecting and raising awareness specifically for those people who will also be at the ballot in March. A good strategy is built on research. So here are a few things that we have been working on and will keep working on. School board meetings, of course, and the capital plan updates presentations were opportunities for me to gather feedback, opinions, data, misconceptions, and very valuable information. We also had opportunities to facilitate engagement with stakeholders. Dr. Shapps, in the fall and really through spring, has hosted a series of world cafes and strategic planning sessions where people are also very invested and generous in feedback. So we will be integrating those ideas in the strategy. And again, I would recommend that we consider moving forward. And I think this will be a critical next step, is to perform a survey, not only of Oyster River staff and families, but of those people outside our little Oyster River immediate nest. So thinking about folks in Durham, Madbury, and Lee, who will be in ballot but do not have students enrolled in Oyster River. So I think it's important that we get a pulse and that we know where those people are with regards to what they know about it so far and what they think about what's next. To raise this awareness with the audience, we've mentioned before, I've talked a little bit about direct outreach. I do think we have natural ambassadors among us. You as school board members are some of them. So the building committee, who's been very invested in this work, the director of facilities, business administrators, but perhaps even more importantly, the people who are in those spaces, they in, they out. And I'm thinking about principals, building administrators, teachers, pairs, educators. So we do want to weave these voices and stories in the material and content that we'll be touching upon later. We also have social hubs in the community. We have farmer's market, town councils, select board meetings, retirement communities. So those are natural social hubs that we could think about visiting. And again, a great partnership with the towns. They share our information in their respective newsletters. So we want to make sure that we keep that in mind as we disseminate information about the project. Regular updates in district communications, of course, dedicated webpage like we did for warrant number five. Regular presentations, if possible, with the school board, thinking about a video series to make sure that people who are not able to visit us physically still have an opportunity to witness what those spaces look like at this point and why the work is so critical. And as we hone on more tactics, we can think about marketing collateral, right? Flyers, posters, QR codes, brochures, fact sheets, and so on. What I've talked about and what Dr. Shapps mentioned aside, other things that we've had in the work so far. So one of my summer projects was to do a little bit of research, look at districts that are about our size and financial responsibility and other districts that are bigger than ours that do have the financial ability to hire high-quality agencies to do that kind of work with them, to try to sample and see what an award-winning bond campaign looks like. So I do a handful, I have a handful of ideas and connected with some folks who have run those campaigns. So I will bring that knowledge and work into the strategy that we're still holding. I mentioned real quick video series and I want to not expand upon too much at this point, but I do want to tell you that we've started working with Dave Totti and Randolph Hits. Hi, Randolph, filling us tonight. We have some B-roll, we have some reference shots. And as we work into the creative piece, then we will be able to use that content in multiple ways to edit the videos based on the purpose and the audience that we want to reach. The lending page, I think you're familiar with the work we've done for warrant number five. So I'm thinking about something similar to move that content outside of capital planning, but to keep a linear story so people still have access to it. But now the main lending page would be focused on construction, renovation, the work done so far and how we're moving forward. Now, Dr. Shapps, if you want to touch upon the next steps?
Just in terms of next steps, I think, as Jen mentioned, we really want to get a baseline and seek through our residents what they actually know and to the extent they've paid attention over the last year as we've talked about capital planning and tried to highlight the focus on the elementary schools. And so trying to understand that base knowledge so that we can really kind of, I would say, target the messaging relative to what and we want them to begin to understand and be part of this process. Certainly, we want to, as we consider video as telling the story and being able to really push that out and the exposure to understand what a budget would look like to be able to do that effectively, whether that's homegrown. There are some entities in the state that work with school districts that really have offered services. But we want to make sure the quality of that really supports or is aligned in terms of how we get the messaging out. I think we have been working backwards through March and really creating a formal timeline of each segment of work, which we'll touch on, and then meeting those, I would say, those deadlines around and building the narrative and bringing people together towards the March of 225, 226, excuse me, and the vote. So we've really kind of mapped out each month to month where we want to be and then fit that in with deliverables and really kind of just at this point, as the next step is over the next several weeks is to, through board feedback and building committee feedback, is to kind of really put stakes in the ground around the kind of rollout of each phase of this at this point. And we just summarized what we call the four phases of our work. First part really is focusing on awareness and engagement, engagement and education, making sure that we really explain the why behind this initiative. And then really from January to March, put it into full gear to get the really message out as far as getting the highest percentage of people involved in the process in coming to the polls.
Yep. I think what's important in this work is to remember to not work in an echo chamber. It's easy to start focusing on those tactics and deliverables and forget what's outside. So I think that's one of the reasons I believe a survey would be immensely helpful, especially to hear from those families who have perhaps not been in contact with the project and do not know about us and our intent.
I think in our work with the building committee, one of the things that really, really kind of made sense is that as we went through the buildings as a group and we were able to see the spaces that are, I would say, inadequate relative to optimal functions and supporting learning, that that was powerful. And the question is, how do you get as many of our citizens to kind of see this firsthand so that they have a context to ask why we're asking to support? And so knowing that not everyone's going to show up in the evening or afternoon or on a weekend to take those tours, how do we bring that to citizens in a way that they contextualize and understand that why? And so that's one thing that I think we're trying to develop and understand right now. Obviously, providing information through the website, but also pushing out information or engaging people one by one in different settings is really a big part of this push here. So, yeah.
Right, and inviting people to visit the spaces. We could do school tours guided to replicate their experience the building committee had. I think they had a lightbulb moment when they were in the spaces, they were able to just realize by themselves really why the work is so critical. And what's important to keep in mind as we talk about these narrative or think about the marketing piece of this is that really we're not selling walls and roofs and HVAC system. We're talking about children, their educational experience, the future of Oyster River. So I do want those videos to really integrate the voices of students and staff who are in the spaces, they in and out, so we hear their side of the story and how much of an impact this work will be doing for them.
Thank you so much. As someone who was here when we did this wonderful facility, just a couple, couple thoughts. One is, I know that one of the things that we were able to really emphasize was beyond the need for the building and that piece of it was just why it made financial sense to do it now. I think that's a harder sell now with interest rates up and different things like that. We can't quite use the same, you know, points that we were able to use back then. But I think it is important to think about, you know, why does that, why doesn't it make financial sense to do this? Because we do have people in the community that will look at that bottom dollar. So that's one point. And then the second thing is in terms of the video, that was really powerful. The video that we had of the old middle school, we showed that multiple, you know, basically like anywhere, you know, take it on the road kind of thing and did tons of presentations, you know, to like retirement homes in different places where people wouldn't be walking into the school to see what it looked like. And then the third piece was just having a citizen group that could do some of the work that the school district could not do. For example, school district can't buy yard signs, you know? So having a citizen group, you know, actually take, take the leadership role in that piece of it. And I was involved kind of behind the scenes. I wasn't one of the central people in that. I did a lot of door knocking, actually. We really went out in the community big time for this middle school. So I don't know exactly the ins and outs of how that citizen group set things up, but I know that they took donations, you know, to be able to fund the yard signs and different things like that. So maybe thinking about some of the folks that came when we were talking about the, you know, when we had to move students around and they were like, we'll do anything to kind of, you know, make this not have to happen again. Some of those people might be in a position where they'd be willing to take that kind of leadership role.
True, and we are limited in what we can do. We cannot promote any sort of voting one way or another. It's really an informational campaign to help people understand what we're asking for and why.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, thank you both very much. We'll move to our student representative, Ms. Bacon.
Senior class officers just met last weekend, actually, to decide to pick a date for the senior sunrise, which will be the first activity kind of of our senior year, which is the, sorry, one moment, August 25th. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Finance committee report? No, okay, we'll move on to the unanimous consent agenda. I'm going to make a motion to approve the, I apologize. Let me ask first, does anyone see anything they'd like to pull out? Denise?
Yes, I would ask to pull out the department hands and activity stipends because I just have a question about one of the stipends.
For the middle school?
For the high school.
For the high school.
Yes, for the high school, please.
Excellent, we'll move that down to discussion and action items. And so I will make a motion to approve the unanimous consent agenda, including maternity leave of absence from September through December, middle school, I'm sorry, that was from Moheramit, a middle school maternity leave of absence from October through April, the nomination of the Oyster River Middle School Activity Stipends for the 25, 26 school year, and the nomination of Mass Way and Moheramit Activity School Stipends for the 25, 26 school year. Can I have a second? Sean, thank you. And all in favor? Five in favor and the student rep in favor? Okay. We're going to come back to the high school, if that's okay. I'd like to invite Meredith up to speak about the lunch prices.
Hello, good evening. Meredith St. Ange, Food Service Director for Oyster River. I hope everyone had had a chance to take a look at the memo. If not, I could briefly touch upon some highlights here. So the nutrition department is looking to raise paid meal prices to reflect the current increase of the cost of goods sold. Since the school year of 2022, 2023, meal prices have remained the same. So pretty much for the past three school years post-COVID. As you are aware, food costs have significantly increased within the last two years and continue to do so going forward. I'm sure that you see that within your own home budgets and at the grocery stores. So in conjunction with the increased food prices, we have unfortunately exhausted our fund balance and therefore will have a very limited amount going forward into FY '26. We're looking at about 26,000 carryover left from the fund balance. So along with those factors and the unforeseeable future of some of our aging equipment, we're proposing an increase of the paid meal prices. We're looking for an increase of 25 cents compared for breakfast and lunch. So last, currently, right now, our breakfast is $1.50 at the elementary level and at $1.75 at the high school level. So we're looking at to be raised for a quarter. Same thing with our lunch prices. Right now, elementary is $3, middle school is $3.25, and high school is $3.50. We're looking for an additional 25 cents, $3.25, $3.50, $3.75. I did some market research of the surrounding schools, three in general, Portsmouth, Exeter, and Epping. And, and within those ranges, we would still be slightly lower than their current prices. So after working with the Department of Education using a paid equity lunch tool that they require to help us kind of gauge where we would be at, we estimated this 25-cent increase would be about $34,000. Now, how the Department of Education bases that, you take your numbers from a timeframe of October 2024. So I kind of basically took that chunk of numbers and increased it by 25 cents. So during that time, here's just some totals. We served a total of 16,206 lunches within all four schools in that October of 2024. Our staff overall, last year alone, served 25,467 breakfasts and 153,995 lunches last year alone. Also, I did some other numbers that aren't on here. So maybe if you had some questions, what would be the direct impact to the families? So if one child were to eat every day with us, which would be wonderful, 178 days, the impact of the 25 cents would only be about $40 a year. And that's eating every single day, one meal with us. Another direct impact maybe to the district that you folks would be thinking about is, like I had shared before, our fund balance is only about 26,000 left. And with this, I'm anticipating about 34,000. Hopefully, more additional revenue could come through. But unfortunately, we would have to then possibly ask for the general fund to cover our expenses, maybe about 70,000, if it's in line with trending with the figures from last year and the year prior. Does anyone have any questions? Yeah.
I know there are à la carte items and like at the high school beverages and those kinds of things. Are those also seeing an increase as well?
Yes. Currently, right now, I'm doing some figure comparisons. Once again, reaching out to those three local schools, kind of what their à la carte prices are, plus doing actual what it's cost, and they will be raised as well. So I don't have numbers to roll into that, but that's another additional revenue that I'm anticipating to see.
Okay, I would make a motion then to approve the lunch price increase of 25 cents for the 25, 26 school year or just moving forward?
Well, let's just say moving forward and let's hope that we could remain and not have to do this maybe for another two or three years, depending on what happens.
Okay, so I'm going to back out that motion. Oh, please, Sean, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That was a question. When was the last time the price was increased?
So I believe Doris did it for the 22, 22th school year. So these prices have been for the last three school years.
Okay, thank you.
I can hear you. Thank you. I can turn on. I don't know why I don't know this one. Are there à la carte items available at the middle school as well? Or is it just at the high school?
Nope, middle school and high school. The high school has a little bit more of a larger option and range, but the middle school does provide some à la carte. And even at the elementary school level, very, very few, some snack items, like five or six.
And then related to that, there are empty vending machines that are in the middle school. Or is that contract up with those or what's happening with those items?
So right now, we're having some mechanical issues with those. They're very, I would like, I would, they're, the ones in the high school are actually older and they work so much better. These are a little bit more advanced and have a lot of more mechanisms, like an elevator, that constantly, unfortunately, the students fiddle with them and kind of break them. I've already had two to three repairmen here, which cost more than what we're bringing in by far. in by far. So I'm looking into that. I would wish that, you know, that we could have them fully stocked and fully operational at all times. I do know that the administration here and I have worked with, working on some timing with it because the students tend to be walking around at all, all times eating those and they want to limit the times on that. But unfortunately, the vending machines here are not as wonderful as I would like them to be. And we still have a year contract left with them. So, and what we're paying on the rental fee, even if they were fully stocked five days a week, wouldn't unfortunately bring in what we're paying to rent them. It's like a rent to own kind of thing, unfortunately, that was signed before. I believe maybe when the, when the school was actually open, to be honest. So we currently own the ones at the high school, own outright. So everything that we make is ours right now here. I have, I believe, one more year left with them to pay the rental fee. Yeah.
I was just going to say, in terms of your motion, instead of saying lunch prices, say meal prices, because there's also breakfast.
Yes, because it is breakfast and lunch, so.
Excellent. I appreciate that. So I'm going to withdraw my previous motion and make a motion to approve the meal price increase of 25 cents. And can I have a second for that? Denise, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Five in favor and the student rep in favor. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Here, have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too. Denise, now is a good time to discuss the activity stipends.
I have to find it again. Oh, okay. It's just a very simple question. For the activity fees, I see that Sean Kelly is still listed for Journalism and Mouth of the River, but isn't he doing a sabbatical? So I just had a question about that.
Yes, so his sabbatical is a part-time spread out through the course of the year. So he will have assignments for the school year despite the fact that he's also a sabbatical. So it's a hybrid approach and that's why he's continuing in this role.
Any further questions on that or the list at all? All right. I'll make a motion to approve the nomination of Oyster River High School Department Heads and Activity Stipends for the 25, 26 school year. And then second for Denise, thank you. All in favor? Five in favor and the student rep in favor. Okay. We're moving now to the Negotiation Committee responsibilities. This stems from, oops. Oh, the bus purchasing, Daimler Truck. I skipped right over it. I apologize. Robert, would you like to take that?
Yeah. Amy Ransom has just provided the board with a memo that we, we continue to replace the bus through our bus replacement plan each year. And so because this is a financing agreement to lease, we need to have board approval. So we need a motion actually to approve entry into a five-year installment purchase agreement with Daimler Truck Financials for the total of $410,367. So we're not doing anything different. It just now requires a board vote to move forward.
I just have a couple of questions. Is this a lease or a purchase of these buses?
It's a purchase. The lease is the loan. It's just called a lease. I don't know why. But we will own the buses at the end of the terms of the loan.
Okay. And then two more other questions. The next one would be, what's the typical longevity of the buses, of how long they last before repairing them outweighs replacing them?
I don't have the answer, but I certainly will be able to ask and research from Director of Transportation. I think it may vary, obviously, but I will get you that information.
And then one more is how many buses do we have in the fleet total? So people know like what this means.
I'd have to give you that as well.
I'm sorry.
I just wasn't prepared to.
Okay. We'll get it. Yeah, I know it's in there somewhere, but I don't usually bring that tome with me every time.
Denise, did you have a question also?
No, I just, I want to say it's around, isn't it around 25? Oh, she's got it.
According to the Transportation Executive summary, we have, wait, we have 2877 passenger buses, diesel operated. We have six vans and two minibus that run on unleaded. And we took delivery of two buses last year and two vans last year. And so this year is three. And we do that routinely to keep them going through. So this is a three-bus year.
I just couldn't remember.
Thank you, Heather.
Good job on the, having that and Denise's memory, pretty darn good, I gotta say. All right.
Spot on guess.
I will give you background information on the average lifespan.
Any further questions? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve entering into a five-year installment purchase agreement with Daimler Truck Financing for three buses totaling $410,367. And Heather with the second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five and the student rep in favor? Thank you. Okay. The Negotiations Committee responsibilities. We had a discussion about making the Negotiations Committee responsible as a subcommittee or a subsection of the board to hear grievances in the grievance process. We've been advised that it would be a good idea to have a vote on that so that it's official. And that's what this, it can be a short discussion or a long discussion. And just any questions that you guys have on that?
Can you just remind us who is in the negotiating committee?
One more time.
Just remind us who's on the negotiating committee.
Yes, I'm sorry. Myself, Heather, and Renee Bennett are on the negotiation committee. And that would be, this vote would be for the Negotiation Committee, so moving forward, however that committee happens to be staffed, if the right word is, that would be who would handle it. And I don't think that this vote would prevent us from having the whole board hear a particular issue. If something big enough came up, we could absolutely take steps to.
The contracts speak to the whole board or subset of the boards. Yes.
We also don't have to vote on this right now. We can think about it and vote on it later. It was just, our attorneys advised us that having the board vote on that would be a smart idea. So if you're comfortable waiting or comfortable voting, that's up to you.
I'm fine voting.
My concern simply would be to make sure that the full board would be, still be apprised of whatever is going on.
A hundred percent, absolutely. Yeah.
I mean, I think that's a precondition of.
Absolutely.
We talked through this, that in our discussions, we talked about the importance of having the board fully informed about the issues. And I think as evident by what has transpired, that information has been in similar ways distributed to the board throughout.
So was the, is the purpose of making it so the Negotiation Committee ends up being a formal subcommittee for this, just to streamline the process or make it so it's faster? I mean, what was the reasoning?
It does a couple of things. For scheduling, with the grievance process, there are tight timelines from notification to hearing to decision-making. So scheduling for three people is a lot easier than scheduling for five people. But none of the process is intended to keep the rest of the board out. It's just intended to make it streamlined.
And second, some, the reason why the Negotiations Subcommittee is a subcommittee, subset of the committee, is that many of the issues that came up, come up or may come up during a grievance are connected to what might be discussed the following negotiations. And so that, at least hearing that testimony relative to the, the issue at hand is advantageous for that. And that's how we kind of decided. It doesn't mean that that would be the case, whether it be the full board. It's just adds, there's an alignment to that process. That's all.
Denise, yeah?
Well, I was going to make a motion.
Yeah, that would be great.
I'll make a motion to appoint the Negotiation Committee to hear grievances.
Okay. Can I have a second for that motion? Sean, thank you. And any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Thank you very much. And the student rep in favor. I apologize. All right. We'll move on to the School Board goals. Thank you very much to Heather for taking notes at our workshop. And I think what I'd like to see as a goal here is that we come out with a sort of refinement and then a vote on the final version next, at the next meeting. So if we can just move right down the list and then if anybody has any thoughts or notes on what we've got, that would be great. Please.
I just, I just want to start before we move to each one. I just feel overall that this is overly ambitious. That's my thinking. I just, I just think particularly with the target of, of the elementary school construction project, I just, and the strategic plan, it just feels like a lot. And honestly, I don't have particular suggestions necessarily of what to take out, but it just feels like a lot.
Yeah. I, so when I was looking at this, I was seeing each one on a separate page and I was worried that it was a lot. Seeing it in this two-page version, it looks a little bit less, but I feel like, and I'm, this is Matt speaking, not, you know, anybody else speaking. I feel that most of what we've got written down is stuff that was, is in the works, in process, stuff that we're, we need to do anyway. And so having it defined and set as a goal is just a natural part of the process so that we can keep focused on it and keep track of it. But it does look like a lot. And my next question to you would be, do you have thoughts on where we compare to? But I know that you just said.
I mean, I, and that's, maybe as we go through, I, I do wonder about, is this the year to necessarily target AI or, you know, I don't know. I just, I just looked at this and I was like, that's a lot of things to keep track of, it seems. And I, and I understand what you're saying about a lot of these are in process, certainly like the curriculum pieces and the, you know, professional development. I mean, I understand a lot of this is already in process, but it, it just seems, you know, as a, as a whole, it's like, it just seems like an awful lot to try and keep track of.
Okay. That's, that's totally fair. The, if we start at the beginning and just sort of come, the development of the strategic plan, the initiatives would be summarize the outcomes from stakeholder input, form a district strategic planning committee, determine metrics, outcomes and resources needed, with outcomes being the presentation of a strategic plan at a board meeting by the spring of 2026. Does anyone have thoughts, please? Yes, go ahead.
One of the things I think might be helpful, thinking about what Denise was saying, is that the strategic plan is kind of an overarching thing and inside of that are a lot of the goals that would be within that teaching and learning subcategory. It's almost like the teaching and learning to me is almost like some of the details that would be within that strategic plan. So even though it looks intimidating, I think a lot of those things are within it. And LAVA is actually just creating the structure to make it happen, I think, as opposed to expecting the outcome to happen within this year. Does that make sense? To make it so, we're starting to make it so we can develop what those metrics are, not necessarily attain the outcome of those metrics, but to generate the metrics to be able to measure things. And I think that is really important to be within the strategic plan that we're discussing what those metrics are. So, because otherwise, I mean, how would you, it's hard to have a goal. Does that make sense? Where I, I think it's just kind of the way we've structured it here to split it apart. But in a way, to me, the teaching and learning for this year is like almost a subset inside the strategic plan is how I'm reading it.
Maybe in the outcome column is where we can sort of put words in like begin or, you know, I mean, again, it's, you know, some of this is like we're not going to be done at the end of this year. So I, I hear what you're saying, Gianna, but just, I think in looking at what we're, what the expectations are for the outcomes.
We can jump to the teaching and learning part, that, if that's the part that jumped out at you as being a lot, okay. That's what I was thinking. So Heather just said we should pick off the low hanging fruit. I agree with that. So that's why I think starting with the strategic plan, that's pretty straightforward. Does anyone have any additions or subtractions to that as a goal? Okay. Fiscal oversight, the expansion package, develop a capital package for the project. I think the only thing I would add there is in the outcome is, you know, present a plan to the community or pass a package. I don't know how we would word that goal.
It's going to be December.
Presenting a plan to the community.
So the develop the capital package for the project will need to be done by December with the budget. Those two are locked.
Okay.
So the, the outreach bit, they just outlined, and that really kicks into gear in January for the, like the full, full, like they'll be doing stuff in the fall, but the full push may be December, January kickstarts. But I think the, the package has to be done in line with the budget and that should be delivered by the end of December of this year.
Okay. So maybe we can have two initiatives there then. Develop the capital package with the outcome of package presented to the community by December of 26. Wait, 25. I'm jumping. And then community outreach and information.
That's down the road.
Is it?
Mm-hmm.
Under fiscal oversight?
Keep going.
Oh, under communication engagement. All right, never mind. Never mind then. So then I would just say add December of 25 as an outcome.
And if I tweak it, I would say December 25, start, the package is approved by the board.
Okay.
And then the community outreach happens.
And that would be also true for create a budget that supports teaching and learning of students in the district. Okay? So we'd have the same outcome there, the same timeframe. The established framework for long-term capital, the continued work of finance, communication outcomes with the board, this I think would also include the building committee. So an outcome there would probably be maybe a presentation to the board in the spring of '26.
Yeah, and I think, I think what might be helpful there is because depending on what is provided in the elementary package and how that goes, that may be a real, from an April to June kind of deadline, because depending on that outcome, it may influence the impact of the strategies for long-term capital.
Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. So now we'll move into, I'm going to jump down to communication and engagement. The elementary expansion package, the community education program, we heard an excellent presentation tonight. And so the outcome there would be implementation of the communications plan by September, you know, starting, beginning in September of '25.
No, I just wasn't there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So I'd say we've already started it, so yay us, which really is yay Robert and Jen.
Yeah.
But, so that seems like a main thrust is March with wrap-up in the rest of the spring.
Okay. The transparency and public trust in the budget process will be tied in with the budget process. So December to March as an outcome? I think anyone that knows me knows that my brain works faster than my mouth, so please tell me.
Oh, no, I was still trying to type the last one up. I'm slow today.
That's what I mean. Yeah, yeah.
So I think this one, we talked about two things, right? The simplified visuals. We need to investigate engagement opportunities for places that do that kind of work or, you know, we need to have a conversation about, are we hiring somebody? What kind of things we would want? That needs to happen prior to the big budget push. So it's kind of, it follows a similar timeline, I think, to the elementary expansion, where we sort of need to start putting pieces in place in the fall to really do the information push from January to March.
Then I think this would be a good spot for begins.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, this is, if there's something that, I mean, obviously, we have to do this big communication push for the capital project. to do this big communication push for the capital project. And it, I, I feel like it's ongoing work in terms of improving communication. I, I don't think this is the time to start a big, like, hire somebody to talk about, you know, how we improve, I mean, we have Jen, and I think Jen does a great job. And so maybe we could just kind of tone this one down a little bit, and just say something along the lines of, continue to work towards, you know, more, I don't know, more easily accessible information, or, or something along the lines. Rather than, you know, say, we're going to ensure all the materials are, well, that's should be there anyway, that our materials discussed in public sessions are made available in the backup. Maybe just the first one, communication plans with simplified visuals and regular community updates, maybe something along the lines of, continue to work on, or something like
Transparency, maybe?
I'm not sure, but.
Yeah. I like that. So taking out ensure materials discussed, because that would be implied in regular community updates. Yes? And also to trim down that goal. Denise, I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to.
I don't know what other people think, I kind of threw out my idea, but obviously want to hear what others think about it.
Regarding kind of both what Denise and Heather were saying, because I remember there was discussion about almost having like a, like a presentation, there was kind of like a flowchart type thing that made it so the budgetary process was more transparent. And I know there was a discussion of whether or not there'd be, you know, hiring an outside thing, company to do that. Right now, I would definitely like to put the idea of hiring somebody to do it on hold, for multiple reasons, budgetary and otherwise, and the fact that we do have Jen, who is, who is awesome. I would rather only do that if it's something that becomes apparent, that it's overwhelming or impossible to do. And I don't think we could really make that judgment call at this juncture. So I think with, with that in mind, I think the wording might need to be a little adjusted about what we want to try and do, would be, might be, be like, just improving it to try and, to try and make it better. Because I know that one of the things that we came up with is just the fact that we ended up having the same questions over and over and over again at the deliberative session, and just to make it so it's clear for folks that we don't have those same questions. So I'm trying to think of like, how we could change the, the wording, because I kind of want to remove an outside agency as a possibility. I don't think we need that, I, we really don't. I think we have the skills here to do it. Anybody have any ideas? Because I'm blanking, I'm a little, I'm a little dumb today, sorry.
Well, I don't see anything in, in the initiative about hiring an outside agency. So if we left it as it is, it would be just kind of up to us to, how do we want to achieve our outcome, or, you know, work those initiatives?
I think the second part of that, it, it seems like it's an action item, but it's really just ensuring that we have transparency, so we have multiple points of contact, so anything that is discussed in a meeting like this is available in another location. So it's already been developed and done, it's just a follow-up item. It's not a, I mean, if I'm reading that correct, ensure materials discussed in public sessions are made, whoops, my computer, are made available in the backup on the website. So that's really just taking whatever was discussed, putting it in another location so we have a reference point.
So maybe the thing with like, the outcome would be to, you know, evaluate whether it was done at the end of the, end of June, to just, that'd be the monitor, this is, end of June would be the outcome of like, monitoring to see if steps were taken, if improvements occurred, because that would be the outcome, just to see if we did better job this time.
Spring of 26.
Yeah.
Evaluate budget communication process.
Right.
Is that, how does that work for you?
I'm, I'm still trying, I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm still looking at the first one about communication plans with simplified visuals and regular. I don't know. Again, trying to think of what adjective or whatever to put in there, or verb, I guess, but, yeah, I don't know if anybody else has any ideas.
I'd ensure regular community updates. I mean, the, the, the one piece to this is timely community, and routinize and time, timely updates to the community, right? So throughout the process. So that would be one initiative that we're trying to advance.
So.
It could be evaluated at the end of the process, right? And, and I think we're getting caught up on communication plans.
Yeah.
I don't think, it's really, how do we increase transparency? Well, we commit to, right, regular, timely, up, community updates, right? We, we, the second one would be to kind of ensure transfer of information to website. These are all things that will be under that umbrella of increased transparency.
That makes sense to me. So if we just take the first one and change it to something like, timely and regular community updates on the budget process, and then the second initiative would be ensure materials made in the public section. So the simplified visuals and the communication plans portion is just part of our discussion in how are we going to do it? It doesn't actually have to be the, like, line delineated initiative. We can, it gives us room to decide how we want to do it.
I guess the only other question I have is, is the board interested in seeking public feedback? In other words, building in mechanisms for public feedback in the budget process, because that would be the third part of what's described here.
I think that that, oh, go ahead.
Well, I think the one, the easiest ways to do that would be like, if we have like a, you know, the budget page inside, this is, this is details, it's not really important here, but, I mean, I think the answer is yes, without having to do like a formal survey, would be that, inside the budget page, there would be like a button that would say, send feedback. Would be as simple as that, because rather than doing a formal survey, which would of course put a huge amount of workload, we don't, I don't think we're really prepared to do that, but to make it easier for people to ask a question, perhaps.
We can also work towards promoting more, because there's two budget presentation. There's a budget presentation evening, and then the actual deliberative session. So if we really promote that budget presentation, and this again is getting down into the nitty-gritty, this, I think, just timely communication and regular community updates, and then that gives us the room to decide, how do we want to make that happen as a goal over the course of the year?
I agree, I think the language that both Matt and Robert said, I think is a good one, and then like, kind of remove the simplified visuals thing, which is actually very specific. And if we remove that, then we'll have a bit more flexibility talking about timeliness, and I cannot remember the words that Robert said that were good. But those two things, I think, would be good, as two bullet points, and take out the simplified visuals, because that's a commitment to something specific of how we would do it, we haven't decided that.
Okay. When you're ready.
All right. So, increased transparency and public trust in the budget process. There are three initiatives. The first is to provide timely and regular community updates on the budget process. The second is to remote the existing feedback structure in the public hearing and deliberative session, and the third is to ensure materials discussed in public are made available in the backup on the website. Dead. Sweet.
Okay.
The only problem I have is who owns what? Who is ensuring materials discussed in public session are made available in the backup on the website? That's not an outcome, that's a, that's part of the initiative. So is that something like, finance committee is responsible for checking on that every time we have a meeting, or like? There needs to be a who mechanism for things that the board really does own.
Right.
This one would be one of them.
But not in the goals, that's, that's a thing we could talk about, and just using the goals to set agenda items, to talk about assigning oversight? Ooh, I think I got the right word there. Okay.
I think it's, I think it's finance committee, because we're talking about the budget. I mean, even though we're talking about this as kind of like a policy thing, but it's, it's the finance committee. We'd be the one looking at it initially, because it's the budget.
But the way we've structured the goal, we can have a discussion about that. That's one of those details, I think, that we can iron out as part of the goal. Are you caught up typing-wise? Yeah, okay. And again, this is, we're not going to vote on these goals tonight, we'll send them out again and have a more chance to review. Moving on to leadership, I think these ones are pretty straightforward, and I think they're good. The continue to advocate for public education, oop, I'm sorry.
Well, engage in conversation with different institutions within the state. So this is getting more at the, in terms of the legislature and that sort of thing? Is that what we're, it's, I'm a little bit like, engage in conversations with which institutions, or, like, yeah, I'm not exactly sure about that.
Is this one that feels like more than, like a big bite, even though it's a single sentence?
I mean, we, we are doing that to some extent, but I think it's a little vague to say engage in conversations with different institutions, like, I'm not really sure what that means.
I mean, to me, the goal is to advocate for public education, right? And maybe the initiative is to target strategic engagement with, you know, state agencies, organizations, ex, you know, to, to list the entities that we want to engage with that is going to allow us to advocate. Not necessarily institutions, but the entities themselves. So it, it could be legislative, you know, kind of statewide, non-pro, whatever they are, that's, the idea is that have a presence in those conversations. Does that make sense?
Could we just broaden that, call them stakeholders? Since they're not an institution, we just call them a stakeholder, whether it's a politician or, or the Department of Education, or whoever it is, they're a stakeholder in public education, even if that's community.
Promote student mental health, review and develop policies. And the security and sustainability of the district, develop a strategy to handle policy and financial implications to open enrollment.
I don't, do we really need that? I mean, I know that it got shut down, it might be back, I hear that, but do we need it as a goal for this year where it did get shut down? I don't, I don't know. Because again, is this more than we need to be trying to focus on right now?
Well, the funny part about all the three leadership things is the stuff that I'm doing anyway. Okay, so, I mean, to some degree, it's like, I, I mean, there's the, the part of that is there, and unfortunately, the thing is, is that with open enrollment, it will be back.
I would, I would agree, I'm, I'm involved in a statewide discussion of administrators around building strategy for engagement around this, and I think, to echo Gianna's comment, unless there's a change in the math around legislature, you know, the numbers, this is coming back. And I, I think it does make sense because of the implications, and when you start to peel the onion relative to localized potential impact, understanding this. So, so as it is pushed forward, again, there's, there's a grounding as to what this all may mean. And that's what I'm really trying to say, is that, how do you simulate the lived experience after the fact without going anywhere different, when there are, you know, when nobody knows how this is going to affect small communities and things like that? So it's really having that awareness upfront, and I, it may not be going down to the grandeur level, but it leads to subset of the board maybe looking at and saying, how could this play out in real terms, based on what the components of open enrollment may be in terms of the rules of the game? And, I mean, I can cite very specific examples, but it may simply is just to identify the core or key elements of impact, and how do we start to have those conversations? Because there's a, the response from the general community is that is localized community to kind of push back on this, in terms of if they fully understand what this may look like, and two, how do we prepare for something that may happen on, on short notice, like we thought was going to happen this year, that may have a dramatic impact, budgetarily, on resources, on space, and things like that. That's all.
And something else in this one is that, we're, this, we're not going to be alone in this. What I can tell you right now, I mean, I, I don't know exactly when the NHSB will publish it, but I know that at least two other school districts also wrote a resolution regarding open enrollment. So the thing is, is that it's on most school boards' radar, because we see it. So the discussion is out there, and so it's not us, you know, trying to do everything by, by ourselves. So there's support there, trying to figure out what to do. So it's, and unfortunately, it's like, as much as we'd like to say we have a whole bunch of on our, on our plate, this is on our plate whether we want it or not.
Okay, go for it.
Outcome, finance and policy committees will review alternative contingencies in spring 2026.
Fine, excellent. Now moving to.
Hold on, you guys all went ahead and didn't come through with outcomes, so I started making them up on my own. Continue to advocate for public education. Our outcome will, as your cooperative school district, will have a demonstrated record of thought leadership in this area.
You have the hay of the rhythm of goals and outcomes.
Yeah.
It was the phrasey that just made me laugh, you, you, you know, the, the thought thing, I don't.
Thought leadership is good, I like that.
We use that at work, it's on my bingo card for one of my guys at work, the higher up yuck, yucks. There are two, thought leadership is one of his, and the other one is, at the end of the day, that's the middle square, so when he says that, you get the free middle square.
Just as long, as long as nobody says paradigm, paradigm is allowed, no, you cannot, nope, not allowed.
Well, we're going to shift.
It's going in, Gianna, I don't know where, but I'm putting it in.
So this, this teaching and learning section is a lot. So I'm, as a, a microcosm of what we've been doing, I'm going to pick off the easy ones to begin with. The role of AI education, which I know is bananas for me to say that that's easy, because it's not an easy topic, but this work is being done, and we're not, we're not, it does us no good to run away from AI, it does us good to, to move forward and get out in front of it as best that we can. My only question to you would be, what, what would be a good outcome for AI? And I would welcome the, a student's thoughts on this too, without putting you on the spot. Yeah. I mean, not that you have to, I'm just saying, if you have a thought, please feel free.
I might be skipping a couple steps here, but eventually, finding ways to incorporate, educate, whether it's education around AI or the use of AI into, into, I'm losing the word here, the syll, like, syllabuses, and into the classroom so that students are interacting it, interacting with AI in effective ways, rather than being told to stay away from the big scary monster.
That's good.
Again, I understand I'm probably skipping a couple steps here.
No, no, that's a good thing for us to talk about, one of our, and the goal, development of policy regarding AI. I think that that's a good, a good way for us to approach a policy.
I think in terms of the report, I mean, I think the outcome is a report to the school board from the committee, you know, this is report of committee, that's kind of, the report of committee work is actually really the outcome.
I don't want to overload the spring of 26, but does that feel like a good time?
Without a doubt, I mean, that works underway, I mean, the policy committee, the next policy is going to look at draft AI policy, I mean, you know, there's a lot of things that are advancing that are, I would say, in line with the rhythm of our work here, and I, I don't think that's unrealistic. I think it's, I think it's that important to, to hold on to it.
Go ahead.
I also think it would be important to include students in that process and have students on that committee if possible. Obviously, probably most likely, once the school year starts, and we can talk, talk to people and find, and if there is any interest in that, but I think that's a very important case.
That was already discussed and decided in June, so to your point, I anticipate, as soon as we come back, seeking both middle school, high school, student reps to be a part of our ongoing study group.
With that in mind, from what Elise said, is that another place where I would actually like student input is under the leadership portion with promoting student mental health regarding bullying, because if, I would like student input on that as well.
Are there any committees, or, like, what's, what, who is dealing to what Heather's like?
We've used the wellness committee as kind of our critical friends group, we just did that through cell phone use, and we, we talked about having that as a, a ongoing, I would say, group that will take on this, this work, in addition to policy.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to skip around, providing opportunities for the staff to grow, oh, go ahead. The note taker is. The note taker is not caught up. We're just too efficient.
Matt, I didn't see last year's when you did these because I wasn't here yet, but the, in each one of the initiatives, I mean, I do this almost daily at my regular job, and each one of these initiatives, I think, may be better explained in like a checklist form. So is, do we break them down in that way? So they're smaller pieces that we understand and that, one, you don't miss them, but also it doesn't look quite as intimidating when you realize there's a bunch of little pieces that go into that one initiative that's, that's more, it seems more achievable, at least visually. You can go through and say, yes, I got that done, yes, I got that done. And it helps make sure we don't forget things.
We did not do that last year. We can do that, but that's one of those things where we're, instead of setting a sort of over our goal, we're setting the, this is how we're going to do it.
Right.
A bunch of these goals, the goal is to determine how we're going to do it. So I think where it's appropriate, that's a great idea.
Yeah, and those are the weeds, because we're, a lot of these discussions are going into the weeds of that, and that's those little weed points that we gotta, the weeds.
I'm sorry, I thought you said leads, and I was-
No, no, no. Oh, no, we're going to get into leads and lags too, because I've worked in that environment as well.
No, I was thinking like a salesman needs leads, makes sales.
Yep.
Okay, providing opportunities for staff to grow and excel. So I actually think on this one, the professional development, the continued professional development for instructional practices should be the goal. And to provide opportunities for staff to grow and excel should be the initiative and continued effective use of professional development days. Please.
I think this happens all, anyway, I mean, it always happens. I think we could strike this honestly from our goals. I don't really see that this is anything different than what happens all the time.
Yeah, I think the only thing that I, I would concur, I think the only possible kind of angle here is to, is on the resource side of it, right? To, to kind of not audit, but determine through budgetary process and alignment between support for, right? The board's role here is to say, what is the need for, the capacity or the need for PD, right, for growth of staff? And then what is the cost to make that happen? And so I think that to me makes more sense relative to say, if prioritizing professional development and growth of staff is a key element, and this is where Gianna mentioned about, it might be a strand of the strategic plan, the intersection for the board is to say, what are the, what are the costs of that relative to supporting it through budgetary means? Just to throw that out there.
Yeah, I actually think we've got that in the fiscal oversight goal, the created budget that supports the teaching and learning of students. So does anyone have a problem removing that professional development portion from the teaching and learning? Okay, we'll strike that. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to joke that I've added three, but this is the only one I'm taking out so far, Denise, so good times.
It won't be the only one. The next one is the, all students have equitable access to opportunities. While I fully support this idea, the suggestion was made by a person who hasn't had time to explain it yet. And so I think that we should set this one aside for now until we have a better understanding of what the goal actually is and what it actually means.
Deleted.
Yes, that's, that would be my suggestion, but I don't want to. And then moving on, go ahead.
Could I just talk about, because one new prioritize time and clarify, on learning, in learning, there is a, certainly a priority to share with the board, some recommendations for the change in learning schedules at each level of the system. And so because we've already started that work, we think it is a key element for the board, the administration and for the community to understand, how can we think differently about the day-to-day experiences of students at each level and the timing of that? So this has been added and something I, you know, clarification. So I think the outcome, the potential outcome is, you know, presentation of scheduling options for the 26, 27 school year. Presentation discussion of, right?
Does that make sense to everyone? Okay.
I made a report and recommendations for schedule adoption in academic year 27.
It works.
Okay, excellent. So then finally, the, these next two, I think are actually one, and it is, I would agree with you here, Denise, this is a lot. So the develop benchmark metrics and establish a baseline, those two goals are kind of saying the same thing, and they really are portions of the strategic plan. I think that what our work is, is not to, oh man, I'm talking back over myself. I think our work is actually the establish indicators the district should use to evaluate its success, as opposed to the partial, the portion up above that said, these could include. I don't think we need the could include. I think the establish a baseline system and the, the initiative is develop the benchmarks, develop the metrics, like how do we want to measure ourselves as a district?
That to me sounds like a big goal. You know, I, I mean, I just, maybe to begin the process maybe or something? Again, some of this I think is going to come up in the strategic plan, and in the strategic plan, there'll be a timeline in terms of when, you know? So again, I'm not, I'm not saying we ignore this completely, but I'm not sure that developing it this year makes sense.
I don't see it as that big of a goal. I mean, I see it as, because we've seen several presentations where a lot of the benchmarks are already well on their way to being established. There may be some comparative benchmarks with, with other districts, but as far as the presentations that I've seen, we have a lot of indicators at almost all grade levels that show us the performance of the students. And I also think this is one of those things that's a, it's an evergreen type of thing. We're going to find new ways to measure it because inevitably, you're going to, we're going to find benchmarks that we like, where we're going to go, but what about this one? We can see more and we can add that in there. But if we establish at least a starting point for, for what we have, and I've seen a lot of great presentations on those things. So I think a lot of this work has been done. That'd be my feelings on it.
I would agree. I mean, I think as Matt kind of alluded to, and I think Gianna mentioned, I think saying, how would we know that we're making progress, right? What are the things that are important in terms of values? And then what are some obvious things that are both comparable that we can say, how are we today vis a vis other systems that we look to or our students? I think the other things that may come up in discussion is really aligned to the development of strategic plan, but also some of our values. It may be the board thinks that full participation in extracurricular activities is a good measure of, you know, success. And so are we, you know, it's like, how do we monitor or gather that data so that we can look at it over time, right? So it's really generating ideas of what are appropriate metrics or benchmarks that would allow us to track over time, that would indicate us that, one, we are aligning resources, we're paying close attention in terms of the learning outcomes and so on and so forth. So I, I agree, it may seem big, but I think there's some straightforward examples that may be a starting point for the board this year to develop. And from my experience or past experience, that became a public document. So there was transparency around what we call it, you know, for better or worse, the district's report card on progress. And it was a way to start out annually saying is that, are we investing in everything in all these areas as demonstrated by certain metrics and outcomes that we value and that we want to continually measure?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sean, do you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I also think that some of those, some of those metrics we can use also tie into the equitable resources because we saw the CTE presentation and the numbers, the data sets that are going back on the CTE, which may not necessarily be a college track student, but they have opportunities on that. We saw the presentations on the other agricultural and those kind of things. So that ties in with that point above it with the equitable access to opportunities. We can develop one thing that shows a lot of the indicators for those.
This is tying on to both what Sean and Robert were saying, is that I actually rather like the details that are inside the, the middle portion, the initiatives portion, simply because it's kind of an accountability and also fitting in the lines of like, this is actually a great place where that checklist would be there, where, oh, we get a, that was in there. And the outcome part would be talking about these indicators are within the strategic plan to, spring 2026, because that's really the outcome. Those things are all inside the strategic plan, and that is the outcome, that these things are written into it, right? So to me, that's how I'd be looking at it, as part of the outcome is to making sure this kind of ethos is put into the strategic plan. So that's the outcome on this one. Because I think these things are pivotal important to be within the strategic plan. And absolutely, that's going to be over the one to five-year period of the strategic plan. But we want, this one is just establishing the things that the board is finding important to be within it. And I think actually having it written down, even this kind of detail, puts a degree of transparency and accountability into it. So this is one of those cases where the nitty gritty thing I actually think is good. Partly just because that way, if I'm looking back at this in February and I've forgotten everything, as one does, I can look at it and go, oh yeah, yeah, yeah. How far are we getting on these things? I know that we talked about this last, you know, June, but then I can look and say, oh, this is one of the things we were looking at. If that makes sense. So I actually rather like it.
Speaking to this document then, taking that suggestion, we would want to take out the words that could include. So what we're saying here is establish indicators the district can use to evaluate its success, then suggestions. So those are not, those are not initiatives, those are suggestions. So we, we would either want to have a separate document where we list these, which is totally fine, you know, for a conversation, we have a memo where we list these. But if we're putting them in under initiatives, that means our goal is to develop an aligned curriculum that is consistently delivered. And I agree with, while I agree with that, having that be a single year goal, when it's going to be done in the strategic, am I missing what you're saying?
Oh, if I'm misunderstanding, please feel free to interrupt me. It's not possible for the year, it's, but I'm not viewing it as saying that it's going to be done in a year. This is establish indicators and this is a subset. It's not saying that we're developing a line commitment that's consistent delivered in one year. That's a subset of establish the indicators for it. So it's not saying that we're doing it in one year, it's saying that we're establishing how we're going to measure it in order to create it.
Okay, so instead of-
I'm not looking at saying we're doing all that in one year, we're, we're creating our, work to do it.
Establish indicators such as an aligned curriculum that is consistently delivered, not the development of, but an aligned curriculum is an indicator. Increased access and number of students, that's an indicator. Performance on summative tasting, those are indicators. The development of an aligned curriculum is an excellent goal, but it is not what I would call an indicator of district success. That's a plan that would help create district success. Am I?
I would agree with that. I think, I think what we're all trying to say here is you, the initiative is establish indicators the district can use to evaluate. The, the outcomes are to ensure that the things that some examples you're saying are part of a strategic plan, right? I mean, that they fall into, that whatever the indicators are, they are articulated as essential components of the finished strategic plan.
All right, so remember that the, that could include portion was kept there just because I didn't want us to lose our train of thought. We don't have to keep them, we can put them somewhere else, but I do agree with Gianna that some of, like, there are things that we should have rolling around in the back of our head, however outcome wise. Here's what I put for this goal, because it's a little further along, I think we can all agree we need some metrics. So adoption of initial metrics for assessment and develop the framework to assess these over multiple years, with the second outcome of an adoption of a larger indicator set to be articulated in the strategic plan. So it splits the baby. We identify things that we are interested in looking at over time, we take a bite out of those into something we want to look at in the more immediate timeframe, and we develop the larger set that goes into the strategic plan for a longer timeframe assessment. That's how I broke down what we've been talking about. I can change it.
I think adoption of initial metrics could take us like three months. I mean, I, maybe I'm making more of it than it needs to be, but to me, that's like huge. I mean, we could be sitting here talking about everything under the sun and having conversations, no, this should be in, and that should be in, and I don't know, like I say, maybe I'm making more of it than it needs to be, but it just sounds like something that is multiple, multiple years. So if we can, instead of adoption, say, you know, explore, maybe I would be okay with exploring or something, but it, it just sounds to me like this would be a lot of work. And I have to say, having done, you know, when we built, and I understand the elementary school construction project is much smaller than this middle school, but it was a lot of work.
I just don't want us to set goals for ourselves that are going to be done also by the strategic plan. So what we can do is set a goal to help guide the strategic plan by developing a common set of benchmarks and metrics, and for lack of a better word, a report, a report card for the district. We can say, creation or to begin the development of a district report card and what we want that to look like. These, these things, the that could include are excellence. And I agree with what they're saying, but that's, like Denise is saying, that's something that we need to say, okay, we're going to develop an aligned curriculum, how do we do those steps? And that's our strategic plan over the next three years, we're going to do A, B, and C. For this year, what do we want those metrics to look like? Or do we want to just have that benchmark and metrics be part of our strategic plan? The strategic plan doesn't have to say, this will be completed five years from now. We can say, this part of the strategic plan, we want done by August of 27, right? So if we just take this one out or move it up as an initiative for the strategic plan, that might simplify what we're looking at. I just don't want us to double up, please.
So I think we get a presentation every year about all the different schools. I have been asking for years for them to provide a peer set so that we can compare, and it hasn't happened. I still have to ask, now they had the data the last time, sort of, but I think that if, especially with the strategic plan coming around, if we don't really understand where we are to our peer comparators, then that makes the strategic plan less effective. And so I do want us to say, please start looking at things. Like, we've never looked at the SAS data. It's a state test that we require our kiddos take, and we have been told or have never used it for anything, and we are starting to this year. I think we need to start asking more critical questions about the things we are being presented as our, as the administration presents things that talk about the state of the district and the learning of our students. So I don't think it's something we can necessarily wait for the strategic plan to maybe start doing next year. I think there are things we should ask for, for this year.
I would say then, that is the goal that we should have in here for this. It's not develop the benchmarks, it's determine our spot in the state. As a school board, where are we? How do we compare against our peer districts? How are we getting, what's our, what's our ROI, our return on investment for what we're putting into the budget and what we're getting out for student results? So if we can have a goal that's something like that, to say, where are we, then the strategic plan is how we move forward. Does that make sense? So change this a little bit to have it say more of what you were just saying. If that's okay with everybody.
So what if we, what if we do something along the lines of our goal being a comparison of Oyster River, Oyster River metrics, which we already have, we're not developing them. I think that's what I was hung up on, is like, we're, we're creating like this brand new thing, but we have metrics. So develop a comparison of metrics between Oyster River and peer districts.
So I think we can still use, establish a baseline for system performance evaluation, and then the initiative could be the adoption of a peer group with which we will look at test scores against, and that could be presented by administration during the next cycle, which may actually be summer.
And I wouldn't limit it just test scores, I would, I would-
Yeah, like, Ben, things that make sense.
Things that, you know, that, you know, comparative data of participation in extracurricular activities, the things that, that we can kind of flush, things that we can flush out and actually compare, right, against peer, peer districts.
So for the purposes of this document, the develop benchmark metrics in that section, we're gonna strike that. Establish a baseline for system performance is the goal. Initiative is establish indicators the district can use for its success, and establish peer group in the state to measure that, those indicators against. And then the outcome would be a presentation at some point. Does anyone, is everyone okay with that? And I actually think that that's very helpful, it's an excellent idea, to help guide the strategic plan.
All right, here's what I got. For the indicator, establish, for the middle column, establish indicators the district can use to evaluate its success against peer districts, with the outcome, presentation by administration after academic year '26, using these indicators.
Anyone have a add or subtract from that? Okay. This was an excellent discussion, I appreciate. Unless I'm forgetting one, I think that was everything on the list. And again, this is a new process for a lot of us, and you guys are jumping in feet first, and I really appreciate it, I think it's excellent to be more organized and more structured. It's, it's a good, to have a checklist and a good accountability and transparency, so thank you all very much. This will get emailed out again, and then hopefully we can have a vote on the final draft at the next meeting. Okay, thank you very much. Are there any school board committee updates?
No, we still have our meeting.
There's none. Any public comments? Again, on the public comments, when you come in to comment, please make sure that you state your town of residence and your name. Understand that you'll have about three minutes with which to speak, and that generally speakers will not be recognized to speak twice on a specific issue, and I encourage you to visit the ORCSD website in the policy section, B E D H, Bravo Echo Delta Hotel, for the full public comment policy. Closing actions, our future meeting dates are August 20, September 3, and September 17. Those are our regular, every other Wednesday meetings for the beginning of the school year. I would, dates to remember, the registration is currently open through the 15th of August. Freshman orientation is the 22nd, I believe this is new this year, is a full day of school for the freshmen, and the first day of school is August 27th, which is a Wednesday, I found out today, not a Thursday, so that was a bit of a surprise. We do have one non-public session, and so I will make a motion to move into a non-public session under RSA 91A colon 3 to see the discussion of matters likely to adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the school board. Can I have a second? Sean, thank you. And that will take a roll call vote, please.
John, Elsie, yes?
Matt Bacon, yes?
Heather Smith, yes? Denise Day, yes?
Sean Harrison, yes.
Thank you very much.